Commissioners, are there any other items other than those that are listed on our agenda that Commissioners would like to discuss at our briefing meeting today? All right, then we'll follow the agenda as published. The first item is an update on the Cox Avenue development solicitation.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Card. I'm with the Community Development Division, and we're just going to provide a brief update on Cox Avenue redevelopment. I am joined by Sarah Odeo. There she is on Zoom. She is with the Development Finance Initiative. You know her probably pretty well right now with both the Cox Avenue project and Ferry Road. She's going to provide about a little information about the development partner kind of solicitation process, which will follow similarly to the Ferry Road process. And I'm just going to give a quick update on the project itself. If you remember, the project is right here at 50 and 52 Cox Avenue. Sawyer Street runs kind of in the middle of this project. And part of the proposal that you approved back in April was to do a street closure on Sawyer Street. And it's just kind of that first initial 140 feet on Sawyer Street that would need to be closed so that we can maximize use of that property and develop something here close to 200 units. So we have approached the city. We went to the City Technical Review Committee about a month ago, and also to Multimodal Committee, and they both had favorable recommendations to approve closure of Sawyer Street. And so next with that, it will go to the City Council, and probably the hearing will be set at the end of July for a hearing, a public hearing, to close that portion of Sawyer Street in the end of August. So that's kind of the tentative timeframe that we're on right now. There were no major issues or concerns that were voiced during those meetings. And so now I'll hand it over to Sarah for the remainder of the presentation.
And I do want to add that on the closure, that closure will be contingent on, I believe it's the conditional zoning. So once they approve it, it won't be automatically closed with the county taking control of it. It will be only once there's a developer in place who is pursuing the conditional zoning does that actually happen. I think that's correct, right, Matt?
Yeah, that's a great point, Sarah. That is right. They have said that they would be willing to condition Sawyer Street closure based on that conditional zoning, the project approval going through and being approved. So that's kind of good news. That kind of helps us.
Thanks, Matt. So just a reminder of what the driving interests are for the development on the county's Cox Avenue properties. So you all at the moment now should have a draft of the solicitation, which will be going out next Monday. And like the Ferry Road solicitation, this really outlines what the county wants to see happen here. It's very clear, we hope, about what the county is willing to do in order to achieve these public interests. And the goal is to allow some flexibility so that developers can bring creativity to achieving these interests on this site. So I won't go through this, but the key around Cox Avenue is really maximizing these affordable units and doing it in a way that fits the context of the area. So next slide. So, and I should have noted on that slide that there are about four individual parcels that are sort of in the mix. Three of them are accounted for in this plan. And you'll see, and we would love your feedback if you think otherwise, that we note that with the fourth parcel, that is along Sawyer Street, but on the other side of Sawyer Street from the main block of sites, we do say to developers, you know, if you can do something even better, if you can increase the density on this side or do it more affordably, if you include that parcel, show us a proposal that does that. So what the solicitation is doing is that it's establishing things like that, those, the goals that the county has, the requirements for development. So what is the bare minimum? You want 200 affordable units for households earning less than 80% of the area median income. And any level of public participation is really tied to a mix of incomes as well. So providing units that are affordable at that 30% AMI price point, at that 50 to 60% AMI price point, and at that 80% AMI price point. The solicitation also describes preferences and really lays out how you're willing to partner with a developer. One of the things that we're clear about on this document is that we're looking for a developer who is going to be willing to pursue what hasn't really been done in North Carolina, which is doing one big project with a combination of a 9% low-income housing tax credit project and a 4% low-income housing tax credit project, which reduces the overall funding gap on the project. And so this is the plan that is out there for developers to react to and to provide proposals that achieve this, if not better, right? Next slide, Matt, unless we have questions. And so the selection criteria is similar to Ferry Road, right? Because the fundamentals are the same, if we can move through the points. So a successful proposal for the development of 5052 Cox Avenue will align with the guiding public interest. So those statements are out there. This is, you got to show us that you can do and that you're willing to do what we want to see happen on the site. We're looking very closely at the qualifications and experience of the developer. Can't just say that you want to do it. You've got to show you can. With low-income housing tax credit development, we assume in the past they have worked with the local government. So we are looking for positive references from other partners in the past. Because you're not just picking a plan, you are picking a partner for the long run who will pull off this project. They need to demonstrate that they can deliver the type and scale of the development that's proposed, those 200 units with ground floor commercial space. They have to show that they can do this within a reasonable timeline. So we don't want someone to respond and say, "We're just going to hold on to this and do it in four or five years' time." They need to demonstrate that they'll put this in their pipeline at the front of their timeline. They need to include assumptions that reflect market conditions. We're not looking for partners that are going to show that they can do it in the proposal super cheaply, but all of the assumptions are off in a way that it's misleading. Or they're saying they need a lot more than what they actually need based on what the market is showing us. And they need to show an ability to adhere to MWBE, Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise requirements. There is one sort of, so if we keep going, there's one preferred but not required, and this is really around energy efficiency. I'll say that the low-income housing tax credit program already has Energy Star requirements. They do have energy efficiency standards. So this one should actually be pretty easy to meet. And this is the timeline. So if we're able to release this on Monday, so it all depends on how much time we're able to give developers. Our goal is to do 75 days. And so if we release on Monday, we are looking at a September 6 deadline. We're always flexible if there are developers. We try to be flexible if there are developers that say they need more time. This is a slightly more straightforward project than Ferry Road. And so we're hopeful that the September 6 deadline will be pretty fixed. And then from there, you'll take some time as a commission, as a county, to pick a partner who you want to work with. Once you select that partner, you will go into sort of an initial set of negotiations for an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that it's non-binding, but it really is a roadmap to the development agreement negotiations and all of the due diligence that both parties need to do as that development agreement is getting negotiated. So that MOU is actually really critical to saying, "This is what the county is going to do over the next year, and this is what you, we expect you to be doing over the next year before we execute this agreement that will give you control of this property." And so our goal will be realistically or hopefully looking at a January 2026 low-income housing tax credit application for the 9%. So the developer should have most of their ducks in a row by then to be able to go and start that construction after that, once an award is in place. Now, keep in mind, because we're looking for this 9, 4% combination, as we spoke to you all about before, there is some risk associated with timing in order to do both of those because that 9% award is not guaranteed in the way that the 4% award is guaranteed. So that's all I got today. Any questions or feedback on the solicitation draft?
I've got just one quick question for one of you. Matt, you mentioned there's no concerns from the committees regarding Sawyer Road closure. Was there any concerns from property owners along the corridor?
We have not really. Through our public engagement, we did talk to a fair amount. We've mailed them probably adjacent property owners, probably about three times now, with specific mailers to kind of talk about this issue and just to reach out to the county community development. And we have not received really anything other than positive responses, really.
Okay, awesome.
All right, any other questions, Commissioners? All right. Thank you for the updates, Sarah. Thanks for all your support to the county in planning this really exciting and much-needed project for our downtown and the whole community. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Have a great day.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Section 5307 grant funds update. William High is here to help us out. Good afternoon. I'm William High from the Community Development Division of the Planning Department. And I'm going to give you a brief overview, and hopefully a succinct one, over FTA Section 5307 transit funding. We're going to look at the program writ large, compare the budgets for both ourselves and the city's transit program, look at the city's directive from the Federal Transit Administration, and how it affects our current grants under this program, and some options for what to do with our existing funding. So... There we go. Broadly speaking, Section 5307 is the federal transit dollars available for urban transit, meaning the census-designated urbanized areas. We can spend these funds on capital expenses, operating expenses, and planning. Locally, there are three eligible recipients. The city of Asheville is the direct recipient to FTA. And then other monies are distributed both to Buncombe County and Henderson County. Buncombe County receives roughly a third of the annual allocation, and the city close to half, with the remainder allotted to Henderson County. I will briefly mention, we receive two other federal transit funding programs, which also start with 53, but we'll try to avoid going into that. I don't know where the receiver is for this. There we go. All right. So briefly, come on. All right. The brief point of this is that at the moment, the 5307 allocations that we receive are accruing at a rate faster than we can spend them. Right now, we receive approximately $1 million each year and have since, I believe, 2018 or '19. And we are only able to spend down less than half a million dollars on that due to eligible programs with mountain mobility. So as the allocation also creeps up every year a little bit, and our expenses increase as well, but not at a rate that we are chipping away at the amount of money that is accruing over time. To compare our budgets to the city's, our mountain mobility budget is approximately half of the city's transit budget. However, as you'll notice by the dark blue, ours is considerably, has considerably greater amount of grant funding supporting it. The green is the local funding. So while the city's transit budget is close to 60%, local funds, ours is only approximately a quarter. Thus, the city is eligible or is able to spend down these federal operating dollars more easily than we can due to the fact that it is a dollar-to-dollar match. Additionally, the entirety of the city's transit system is in the urbanized area. Well, almost all of it is in the urbanized area, whereas we serve the entirety of Buncombe County, which, of course, much of it is not in the urbanized area. Recently, the city, as direct recipient to the Federal Transit Administration, underwent what's known as the triennial review, where the FTA looks at all manner of things associated with the provision of grants to the local area. And they had two findings relevant to this discussion for the city. The first is they want the city to reduce open grants. We, Buncombe County, have approximately six or seven annual grant available to us right now. And then the second part is that they want us to program, that is, tell them where we're going to spend these funds that have yet to be on out, that have yet to be programmed. Briefly, there is a backlog in no short because we received a great deal of CARES and ARPA funds in the earlier part of the decade that we have, we can spend more flexibly and get a better return on, but we need to spend those down before we go back to these traditional annual allocations. So, whoop. I don't, I don't know. All right. So in total, we have approximately 1 point, a little less than 1.4 million dollars that we believe may be at risk of being reclaimed by FTA. These are grants from 2018 and 2019. And the bulk of them are the annual allocations. There's a smaller program there called JARC, short for jobs access reverse commute. It actually is just another part of 5307. But all that is to say is these are monies that we don't anticipate being able to spend for approximately four or five years from now because of the prior mentioned ARPA and CARES grants. So what do we do with them? One of the things we can easily do with them is to let the city use them. We rescind them to the city, and they spend them down under the ARPA program. The question, though, is, what should we ask for in exchange? If we don't spend these, it's, you know, as we've, I believe we're all on the same page, that it's better for them to be spent in Buncombe County or the region. However, Henderson County can't really spend these more effectively than we can rather than going back to Washington. Thus, due to these at-risk funds, we think there are a few items that we could request from the city should we rescind these funds directly to them. The first would be, for the last few years, the board has approved 5307 rescissions in support of the WE1 extension of New Lester Highway as it exits the city limits and into the non, to unincorporated areas. And secondly, to support the Route 170, which runs from downtown to Black Mountain. So we would ask that this allocation be in support of those presumed requests. The city last week mentioned that they wanted to clear this out before they made any requests, and we just want to roll this into that. Secondly, it would be to allow us to, allow Buncombe County to take on more of a separate federal funding program that we can easily use in the rural areas and will support our customers in, throughout the area and not just in the urbanized area. Those funds, I should mention, have already been allocated to the city through the MPO process. So we're trying to work out the details there. But that's that. And then finally, to just evaluate, not to implement, but to evaluate a stronger connection between our Inca Canler Trailblazer and the city's WE2 route, which meet at the Goodwill on Patton Avenue, and just see if we could improve a safer connection between those routes. That is all I have for you, but I am happy to take any questions.
Okay, great job, William. I've got a couple of questions. On the WE2 route, what are, what are some of the ideas around how to make a better connection with the Trailblazer route?
Certainly. So currently, the, the point where the two routes meet is already in the city limits. However, it is our anticipation that it might serve both the Trailblazer, which currently takes an unsignalized left turn onto Patton Avenue, out of the parking lot. So it is our hope to be able in the future to move that route's terminus further west to the Ingalls at Smokey Park Highway. It's both presumably a better job, excuse me, a better trip generator with all the businesses there. And it is that there are three traffic lights there that both our route and theirs could safely exit that facility.
Sure. But that needs to be looked at to kind of confirm it's like,
The city would need to...
Can be done in an hour, I guess, right?
Correct. The city, precisely. The city would need to determine whether or not they can fit that into the existing structure of the route.
Okay. Terrific. And then the other, the other question I had is around whether it makes sense to, you know, think about this funding decision as really sort of a one-off funding decision or as something that could be sort of looked at as maybe something that could be in one form or fashion undertaken in future years as well, right? Because obviously, these resources are going to be for transit planning. It takes time to plan things. It takes time to buy equipment. It takes, you know, and if you're going to, I mean, maybe, maybe the Trailblazer thing here is a fairly discreet, you know, fix. But if there were going to be other service-level improvements, you know, those are more long-term kind of service-level enhancements. So, you know, we hear, we hear a lot of support, in particular, for the need for enhancements to transit services in South Asheville, South Buncombe, that area of South Buncombe County, most of which is in the city, but maybe not 100% of it. But, you know, it's a, it's a really fast-growing part of Buncombe County, tons of new housing and apartments and, you know, commercial developments down there. And, and the two routes, you know, the city has two routes that run down there now, but they're really long routes. So they don't run on the one-hour route. I think they both run on a 90-minute cycle. So if you're a person who lives in Hendersonville Road and you want to go downtown or go somewhere else on that route, you know, you're basically looking at like a, on average, a 45-minute kind of a, you know, cycle there. It's my understanding that a lot of the other areas the city's focused on, West Asheville, and some other area, Tunnel Road, you know, there's now like a 15 or, you know, 20-minute or even less, maybe like 15-minute cycle for some of those, which really makes using transit a lot more practical for people. And we may be a ways away from getting to that kind of level of service enhancements on Hendersonville Road, but, but anything else down there could, could really help a lot, especially for people who really are dependent on transit already. So, so I guess my question is, while making decisions around something like that may not be possible, you know, that would take a process to go through and need to be looked at. So maybe just a one-year window is not enough time to really think about that in a constructive way. But if the commission is supportive of allocating these funds to the city, could that be an idea that we could, you know, really encourage to be looked at? And if, and if it is possible to, to do a service-level enhancement in South Asheville, South Buncombe, then perhaps we could, you know, kind of think about, kind of signaling our support for thinking about providing additional resources in future years to sustain such a service-level improvement?
I think it certainly is a conversation the city will be willing to have. When, in, in discussion last week, the city's particular request was for capital improvements. That's in, that's a quick and easy one, and their buses, as I believe we're all aware, need improvement. So that was their specific request with, should we rescind funds? How they would use it? As mentioned, we're not putting any particular parameters on how the city uses these funds at this time. I think it's, however, to your question, there's sort of two elements as well that, again, we have these funds that are accruing at a rate faster than we can spend them. And so the city is also, I believe, going to request in the coming months to reexamine the allocation formula. So they would presumably get more than the 47% currently allocated to them and thus Buncombe and Henderson Counties would receive less. That would provide some greater balance to them in their ability to pay for these routes on a permanent basis rather than having this conversation each year. That said, a year from now, there will be another grant that is probably at risk of expiring. But I don't have to have that. I presumably won't be having that conversation with you, Chairman, so...
Unless something's gone really sideways. So I'll send an email. I'll send, I'll email all of you.
There will be public comment.
This is what you should do. Okay, so, but that, the change to the funding allocation, that's something that would be done through the MPO.
Yes, it would probably take on a study that would be paid for.
Fantastic representation on, oh, excuse me. Which, which the county and, you know, the city and others have representation on. Which, which the county and, you know, the city and others have representation on. So that body would look at that question about changing the allocation.
Correct. It was last done in 2017 and performed by a consultant, and most likely, the MPO would request a similar scenario where the allocation was reexamined by an outside party.
Okay. All right.
I'll, I'll be here next year, so I have a question for you. What are the advantages and disadvantages of us giving this money to the city?
So first of all, we have been told that these funds are likely to be taken back by the federal government. So one advantage is simply that they remain, at the very least, remain regional, but more importantly, remain within Buncombe County. If we rescind, under the agreement from 2017 that I just mentioned, we have the power under it to directly rescind funds to us, to another recipient. Henderson County is in a similar place as we are. These funds are accruing more quickly than they can spend them down. So if we rescind these funds to the city, they should be able to use them without them expiring. Any particular disadvantage? None for this year, I would say. We simply have, it's, these funds are in the back of the line, and so we have other funds that we need to spend down prior.
We've been told, but when will we know for sure? Will we get something from Washington or somewhere telling us? You know, when you deal with the government, I don't like to hear, "We've been told."
Right.
To see something.
So the city is, as I mentioned, the direct recipient of these FTA funds. The way that this has been designed by FTA is that they don't want to talk to subrecipients. So any communications we have through FTA are to go through the city of Asheville. And so we don't have any written documentation from FTA in support of the, in support of these funds potentially expiring. That said, we have gotten a portion of that triennial review, which speaks to the desire of FTA to go ahead and get these funds spent down. I would anticipate, thanks to CARES and ARPA, this is a nationwide problem for smaller systems such as ourselves, and particularly for systems such as ourselves that offer urban and rural services. So I don't anticipate that we are unique.
I just have a kind of a follow-up question to that. Tacking on to what Commissioner Newman, Chairman Newman and Commissioner White said, if someone was hypothetically, if I lived on Hendersonville Road and the S3 route was one that served my area, is there any kind of, I guess, what does that communication look like with our city partners about how we get their attention on certain specific things? Because I've seen the past year or two, we've been talking about addressing the same concern. Is there any way we can have a formal kind of discussion about that? They're already signaling infrastructures they're concerned, from what I hear you saying. How do we flag that in a way that would lead to some meaningful progress for the things that we all care about at this point?
Certainly. So first of all, as mentioned, the, the MPO, the French Broad River MPO, is one such forum where we have those conversations. Commissioner Sloan and Commissioner Edwards are currently our representatives to the board there. In addition, city staff and county staff have been having more meetings to coordinate that are both on elements such as these, as well as service issues. I'll just briefly mention, one of the reasons the city is requesting those funds to be spent on capital is, it is a 20% match for any recipient for capital expenses, but it is a 50% match for operating costs. So it's just a, it is a more clean-cut and better deal for them to buy a vehicle with it than it is to do the operations. But that is a conversation that we can have at the staff level. It is occurring at the regional level, and, and I anticipate at the elected officials' level as well.
I'm happy to chat with Parker offline about that.
Right. Other questions on this item? So in terms of, in terms of the process on this, so the... So the county needs to give its support for making, you know, going, going down this path, right? And, and in terms of these specific funds, does this also require the MPO to approve it as well, or is this sort of just between the city and the county effectively?
We are, under the 2017 agreement, we are required to inform the MPO of the rescission of funds to the city. It does not need to be approved at the MPO level. That was already agreed upon in the, in the 2017 agreement. That said, we have brought similar requests to you in previous years in support of the WE1 and the Route 170 that the board has voted on. This is similar, albeit larger request, and so we would likely bring this item to your July meeting to, to request a vote from the full board prior to informing the MPO.
Okay. Sounds great. So we would, we could adopt a resolution, it would include the Trailblazer, it'll basically say, "We support this. Can we ask that it cover, that we please together look at the Trailblazer route? We also would request that it cover the resources needed for the Lester route that extends outside the city limits." And then could we also say, you know, again, understanding, like, they've got all these needs that, you know, we don't even know about, right? It's not our, it's not our shot, but, but that we would, that we would really like to see consideration, whether it's, you know, short-term or longer-term, we understand, you know, you can't do everything all at once, but that we'd really love to see some consideration of service level enhancements to Hendersonville Road, and, and maybe we could do it in a way that kind of expresses, like, the commission is, you know, this is mostly in the city limits. You know, we hear about this issue a lot, and we're, you know, we want to be supportive of it, and this is, this year and in future years, if there's ways that we can be supportive of that, we, we would like to be involved in that kind of dialogue with the city.
Certainly. We could absolutely include that.
That's great. All right. Anything else on this item, commissioners? All right. Thank you, William. Appreciate it. Okay. That's everything on our agenda, commissioners. So let us adjourn, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock.
For you to adjourn, sir. As you look at the, review the board June 18 agenda, I do need to add an item to that meeting, too. It is a budget amendment, a cleanup budget amendment, as we've been trying to get them cleaned up. This is our last meeting of the year. It is for Representative P E fund, just to cover any overdoses that may happen. The, the amount can go on consent, or we can add it and have a conversation on your regular meeting.
Okay, why don't we, I've got a, I've got a copy of this. Do other commissioners have a copy of it as well?
Arkanav doesn't have one yet.
Okay. Sure. We'll add this to the agenda. Let's just make sure commissioners take a look at this, and let's just add it to the agenda and vote on it during the meeting. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
And we will have a, we will have a need for a closed session after the commission meeting. Mr. Fareed, could you talk about the purpose or the subject matter?
Yeah, it's two, Mr. Chairman, it's two legal matters, just for information for the board for its decision-making process. Expect no decision from the board this evening.
All right, thank you. All right.
Brownie, we have two resolutions. Could you have those to go before the public comment?
So we have two resolutions, one on Stevensley, one recognizing Pride Month, and to, to do those before public comment.
Right, because so the people who are coming could go.
If that's something that the commissioners are all in support of, we can, we can do that. Is everyone good with that? All right, sounds good. Don't let me forget that, okay?
Don't worry.
All right.
Commissioners, did you want to move the presentation as well, or we'll just leave that till later?
The presentation, hold on.
Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Haven't had a request from staff, but I know that's a short.
Sure, why don't we just do all the presentations together? Okay? Sounds good. All right. All right, we're adjourned.